Dear Lord, just pray for the ones that's in the hospital and the ones that's having surgery and the ones that's in the nursing home. Just let us make the right decisions for the city as we can and for the newcomers coming up, things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
State Banking Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Banking Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a lawn mower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero-turn mowers. We have a full line of the steel weed trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need, come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Gewin and Fayette. We've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for 23 some-odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air.
We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gewin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
Welcome everybody to July 14, 2023, Winfield City Council meeting. The item on the agenda is per the minutes for June 20, 23 meeting. If anybody doesn't have it, nobody has to come in and question how the minutes have been written. I'll ask the motion. Keep making motion 10, second all in favor. Next item on the agenda is can vest, one-off election, Resolution 1351.
Doc, save it now.
I just started blocking the dice. I don't have no clue why I'm doing this.
So when he opens this one, we'll put in that right there, and then this with the total cast, one absentee, we have three, one is countable, and he's going to read off the reasons.
Can we go ahead and read it?
Yeah. We had three provisional ballots cast. One person transferred from Northport. Timeframe for eligibility voter in this election had passed, no count. One person was registered in Eldridge, not Winfield, no count. One person was in the city limits and registered, and both will count. This one's in this file.
I don't need to ask, I'm going to make this resolution 1351 on the one-off election. Whereas a special municipal one-off election for the city of Winfield is due in days they held on July 11, 2023, as provided by law, and whereas the municipal building body of the city of Winfield met on its 13th day of July 2023, all members therefore being present or a quorum there of being present, which we've got all the members, at 5:30 PM and have canvassed and returns and has ascertained and determined the number of votes received by each candidate. Whereas the municipal building body has ascertained and determined the result of the state election is followed. Council place number one, Kenneth D. Crumpton, with the, I'm going to go ahead and add that to one provisional ballot, with that provisional at 85 votes, machine cast votes was 84, and then one provisional ballot made 85 his total. Larry B. Senior had 138 votes and one absentee vote, which made his total, is that 138 include his?
No.
So his total vote would be 139, 139 to 85. Now, Larry B. was all of the city council, the city of Winfield adopted this 13th day of July 2023 as a result, as Larry B. Senior with a majority of the votes at that election. I'm going to ask the motion to accept this resolution 1351. Do you make motion second? Change all in favor.
I guess we'll have Larry sworn in at the next council meeting. We'll put that on the agenda for the next.
It's easy, boy.
Well, I'm going to have to probably go down, I'm going to have to probably amend it, let's have it Thursday. I said we didn't, we probably not, Todd, has Todd got anything here for this next resolution? Well, can you reach out to him? I'll go down and you'll reach out to him, ask him if he's got, tell him we got a council meeting, ask him if he's got.
He said he'd be down here just a second.
We're going to be done by then, we're trying, we're going to put that resolution, we're going to go down to the next item, come back to that, see Todd here. Next item on the agenda is the street paving bids. We have had, Angie just informed me, we had zero bids turned in for the paving project that we put out, have you heard a couple?
I have not, and this was advertised, and he put in the test list of.
He put one in the journal record, where?
Yes, there he is.
I know what he exactly turned it up a couple of times ago, so I'm not sure.
So I might have to revisit that and see what the problem was, because we can't afford to nobody bidding on it.
Kind of hard to give somebody.
Kind of curious, I'm going to make a few phone calls, you know, expect it better than only bid, sign that one, and nobody submitted. Todd gets here, we're not going to ask him for just hiring it down there versus bidding bid, I need to get him on that. Next item on the agenda is the concrete bids for the tennis slash pickleball innovation project. There again, zero bids on concrete on that, nobody bid. It ran in the paper as well. Square fox here.
I think it ran three times, too.
So, I don't really understand why we don't get them in here, unless everybody does work so overwhelmed with. I don't really know why we didn't receive any bids, we don't do any more advertising than what we've done on both these in the paper, we want to advertise it for bids, when you have at least three bids on most projects.
I know if it's like what I'm dealing with over there with the conflict, folks don't mind bidding on it, but they tell me they're a year out, anywhere from 12 to 18 months.
That's a good problem to run the house, that's a guarantee concrete stuff's not going to get too cheap.
And the other, well, the other reason that they're back, they got jobs, but can't get nobody to work yet.
That's the biggest problem. I'm going to go down to the, there again, can't afford, I don't have anybody to afford two. Next item on the agenda is an update on the senior citizen bus. We've got, it's in no way here, an update on that bus issue that she called up to get.
I called Call Cannon, like y'all asked me to, and spoke with them. First, they come back with, yes, they would let him do the three months. I think they told me money is $600 would be a problem. Got home, the mayor told him what he said, he said, well, we've got to make sure there's nothing in writing there that says we're not under stipulation that we will buy the bus no matter what. When I went back with that, they told me that, that there was too much risk involved to let me get the bus until October, say October 1, with no guarantee that we would buy it either way. So we're back at square one until I get the, from the grant, and they told me to hear from it sometime in September.
The council agreed that that was the right decision for me to make without them, so we go forward. I told, I mean, she told me that they agreed to that, I was going to make sure that that was done, standing in it was. So we're back at square one, still interested in the bus?
Yeah, yes, yes. I've got two trips coming at the end of this month, and I'm praying I don't have more people signing up on them than our old bus will have.
And how many can you take on a bus?
Ten.
Ten? You've got normal day-to-day, how many you got?
Today was one of my favorite meals, I only had 22. Yesterday I had 29. I'm running in my high twenties. Would you not agree? Yeah, I've been worse than the saints in the garden, it is, I've worked for seven years to get to this point. We're worse than the saints.
You said you can, you can apply for this, when can you submit this grant?
I submitted it the last day of.
And they'll know in September?
In September.
Whether or not you receive.
Right.
And you didn't, when you submitted the grant, it's not for a particular amount?
Yes, you have to put down what you're getting for it and the amount.
So you did submit for how much?
I didn't do it last Saturday, I don't remember the exact amount. Thirty something thousand.
Thirty, thirty. And it's RCD?
RCD grant.
Have you spoke with RCD about the grant? How many, if there's, what's your chances of receiving that grant?
I have not, but I did go, I did reach out to Tracy Estes, and he actually wrote a letter in support of it for me, which he says helps. I mean, I had nothing to lose but trying. The first time I've ever had him do that is part of one of my grants, he did.
And how many passengers, fifth van was this one?
Twenty-five, this 25-passenger bus, 26 and plus the driver.
And what year was it?
Oh, nine, I think. I'm sorry, I didn't bring any information with me.
I know most of it, I'm just sitting here and recollecting.
And it was, it's less than 25,000 miles on it?
I checked around, maybe, to see if I could find something else for that, because I think it's, I've been down there, and I go down there and talk to some of those folks that are in the program, and I can't find anything to help.
And say I've looked, say that everything is.
What bothers me about that is I had somebody make a call on the vehicle, and because it's been there so long, they're pushing it heavy, trying to get rid of it, and that's why I kind of thought that they would take that paperwork and let it go, because they were willing to get, they're willing to get rid of this thing.
How long was the price on it, 20?
Right now, be honest with you, my thoughts are.
Pardon me, do you want me to hear?
I don't know if I might get one.
I think, I'll say it was 28.
It's 20 and something.
I think it's 29, and then that, that didn't make it waters.
They are. But I think what we need to decide, where we're at right now, I think what we need to decide is, is if the council, at any amount, if, whether it be 5,000, 10,000, up to 40,000, if the council, we need to decide if we're going to, with an effort, try to support the other bus for the senior program. If we are, we might, we might want to do, since you're reaching out and some checking to see if we can, what we can find, not just this one particular bus being, we know it's not going to bust out there, it's this closest bus, it's the closest dealership that was going to be able to be a quick fix or a quick solution to the problem. I'd like, I'd like the council to, you know, discuss and let's decide if we're going to, like I said, support this program, we're trying to get a bigger bus to handle more passengers. A 25-plus passenger bus is what she's looking at for trying to be able to handle the needs of what they've got.
And Gina sent me a Facebook post of a church in Florence or Russell.
Rogers, Florence.
And I've got the text on it here, I'm going to be honest with you, Kent Nelson called about it, because he, he, I talked to Kent, he said, they're friends, we'd like to get this. And he, that's a diesel, the one thing that, that one is a diesel, but this one's a gas burn diesel, the price, what drive-by gas pumps are, they didn't say the difference in the price there. The price on it was about the same. It was in the 30s.
Because a lot of times, I mean, I don't know where that was at, there was time I there, but a lot of times churches are wanting to upgrade or get bigger buses, where they may have one, you know, that is a 25-passenger, and they're going to go to a 50 or 70-passenger.
Right, here it is.
They might be willing to.
It was a 2,007, 32-passenger bus.
It's a 32, 32, 32, 32, 32.
Had 32,000 miles, and the one at Call Cannon, I think that's just over 21,000.
But that one's a gas, one's a diesel.
One's a gas, one's a diesel.
What's the make of the one that's got 30-plus passenger?
I've seen.
What's the make?
I've seen your picture.
Oh, dude.
It's a.
Chevy C25006.8.
It's a 2,009, the one at Call Cannon is 2,009.
So what's the council's, that we want to try to proceed with time to, through the board that you've got, to not have a big enough bus for these trips? I know we can't buy one, but September's not that far away, you know, like me and Mike talked, I don't think that she'll get the full amount anyway from RCD.
I don't think.
I may be wrong, but I don't, I think not be, you know, may pay a third of it, a quarter of it, a third of it, but I don't believe it'll pay 100% of it. I'd like, worst-case scenario, to know what we stand for, is how the council feels, how we need to move forward with it, if the council wants to pay two-thirds of it or three-quarters of it, you know, whatever that grant is. Of course, any grant's going to help, but I just need to know how the council feels about moving forward with purchasing a bigger unit for these trips. I think we ought to, but we're going to, we're talking about paying three-quarters of it. Really want to get that, call them up and offer $21,000 for it. I think what we, three-quarters of it, how about if we, if we maybe set an amount that we're willing to pay up to four of us, and we've got eight or 10 weeks before we know the grant. I strongly recommend that we don't do something, we don't buy something prior to, because we can't buy it, and then fly off that grant, order it after we've done bought it. So I think we need to be, I don't figure there's a lot of people out there knocking the doors down, trying to buy these vehicles, these 30-plus passenger vehicles. So I think we can be researching and talking with the churches that's got this and different ones, and see if we can find a unit in that price range, and then we'll see what RCD's going to do for it, how much they're going to pay, if they're going to pay any, and how much they're going to pay toward that grant. We already have the unit picked out, maybe found, how the unit found, they're interested in, and then move forward, and then see what their, what the amount is they're going to pay. But I'd like to just go ahead, maybe decide tonight that we are willing to spend X amount of dollars and then take into consideration what RCD's going to pay for. I personally feel that's my recommendation, that we try to do it, because the program has grown, she's done a good job with the program, and for the seniors, the senior citizens.
I've got a lady in the last 10 days, who's started coming to me from Bankston. I've got two coming from Eldridge.
Because they call the secretary from Utah, they'll start tomorrow.
From Utah?
They're going to hear from Utah.
Utah, the state or the city?
The state of Utah.
Okay. You know, the lady from, that's what somebody asked me, Mike asked me, why is the lady driving to Bankston? She's coming to the wellness center, and her husband, son works at the funeral home? Yeah, okay. Son works funeral home, she comes up here and goes to the wellness center, some, I've got several ladies from the wellness center that is coming, and they talked to her into coming, and she's even coming out of Bankston, she's not going to the wellness center, driving from Bankston here.
That's what we want, that's what we want, in that would have been mid-30s, 35,000, what we'd be willing to pay toward this purchase of one of these buses. Like I said, we'd be trying to find, trying to locate one, and then we'd see what RCD's going to pay toward, and put that forward with what we're willing to pay. Where's your next trip?
I've got two the end of the month, that is some stuff, and I call this David, and that's like, I just pray that I don't have, have them all sign up, and I've got room to go. And I'm just being honest.
You don't buy up to all that, they think they'll need to acquit.
Well, I've got a list that there that, and I've, I found two, where Allison has sent me the final number on the one at Call Cannon. I think this included everything, it's $30,744. I'm almost positive that includes everything, I'm looking at it from a picture on my phone, so.
30 how? 22.
And I've got Carfax here, I'm in, out of the Carfax, it's got a 3.6 stars up.
I think that was poetry, I think that was in there.
Yeah.
I think it's just right in that one.
Look, the poetry looked like it had just been read out. Look, the upholstery looked like it had just been red. It's clean as it can be on the inside. The Church of Christ at Oxford.
Well, you said the dealership was not willing to work with the city and park on this?
Because we won't guarantee them at the end, if I, because we won't guarantee them if I don't get the grants, that we will buy it.
She's a little bit ready for a couple months to.
How much did you say we want to make?
Is it like thirty-five thousand?
About that span, around twenty-eight?
But if we find one, if we find one, we feel like it's a little bit of a deal, you want to say we just need to set a cap, ain't setting a cap at thirty-five, that's why we need to put a cap at thirty-five, that's what we're going, we're willing to do it. And if we find one that says it's thirty-eight or nine, we feel like it's more, a whole lot better deal, and R C and D, whatever they give, we can add it to, to go with that.
Because on the R C and D, I don't put that I'm getting this lead-in, this man number and this, that I'm just, that I'm getting one.
Put that around that dollar figure.
Around this dollar figure. Now, I did include this stuff on it, but I can easily, you know, that's like when we bought chairs and some tables, we, you know, just had to put it up in there, put up some chairs and some tables.
My actual motion, let us, to do the.
We're motioning to stay.
I'll go negotiate for it.
So, does it get back at thirty-four?
We'll turn it up there. Second, I have to get a sec. Keep my sec, all in favor. All right, Susan B., don't commit to nobody and research with everybody.
I'll get to work.
See what you come up with. I do, I do kind of lean forward to make experience lean toward more of a diesel engine versus a gasoline engine.
You would label it. Do you want me to call that church at Rock?
Might talk to the Oracle, ask if they got it in the heart to make a donation to the senior citizens in Winfield.
Well, I didn't try that at Call Cannon, and I got, we got, we got knocked off real quick, we were getting a real firm to net them.
Churches aren't usually in the making, I'm trying to.
Yeah, but even saying the tax deductible and home lawn yards, we didn't even put a big thing on the back of it down there at my office, and I'm, I'm here.
Remember all that. All right, and that's on the agenda, old business, we start with James over here, what kind of, you guys, you guys, I say, I think I'm going to do old business, I'm going to go back to this restoration. I'll be nice, I already know part, I think we proved to have it done, nobody's given Mark permission to get started on it. He gave us, didn't I send you, didn't he give us a figure? Yeah. I thought we had approved it, haven't done yet. So, everybody's okay with what he said? And all he's wanted, nobody told him to start it. Ready to tell? That's one question I have, we're not concrete and under it. I'll get him, I'll get him, I'll get him. I'll bring traffic logs up, do it. Sir, you'll sell that for Zima?
Well, I'm really tired of it, I really am.
I've been tired for about a year and a half.
I mean, I can't even go places now in town anymore, considering.
Angels like ordering T-shirts, returning their sizes and put a phone number on there, call this number about traffic light.
I think it'll be handy.
You can put Mike's number on there. Good number.
See if we can't talk to banks and see if they can put it on there.
I did make a phone call to, to him, and he never returned my phone call.
Well, Wes, because he and I have been, Wes Billard has been with DOT, have been corresponding back and forth as well as the mayor, and, you know, the last council meeting they were supposed to do was in the next two weeks. Well, he started at that point, calling both numbers, both, both parties, the consultant and I guess whoever else, whatever his name is. He couldn't get an answer from either one. And he finally sent me a message, and he said, "Would you please tell the mayor, I can't lie, give anybody to answer my phone call. I can't get them to ask me, I can't get them to call."
So, we have our rights. We don't return no calls.
So, I think, I think since the election's finished now, tomorrow maybe I should reach out to the adjuster for Annick that hired that consultant. And I'll talk to him about, because that's not the only thing that we kind of left hanging out here, but that's the main thing.
Maybe tie it, so. Says they're reaching out to get other poles, says they have all the components and the long talk, lack of the right word, say the erectors, the one that's gonna put it up. So, the way they're at now is getting them to agree as at the time that they're willing to come do it. And that with Hattaway, out of Fern, Hattaway, out of Fern, they date, so they're reaching out to other companies now about installing. That's where I'm at on that, we're kind of at with that, too. There may be, I mean, in all honesty now, maybe come like this paving and concrete issue, getting people to work. In the beginning, I know it wasn't that, but it may have got to that now. Temp and now, there's some work, I just can't get the help to get done. I don't know, bringing that old boom truck up here and picking them and tow the two up and hose them in there and say we're starting on, just might take a little bit to finish.
So, hopefully, it hasn't been.
But I'm, I'm promising this, I'm open to any suggestions anybody's got for expedite in them, if it, I don't know. You gotta be careful, because if it is because it can't get help to do it, if the ones that is willing to do it and they can work it in, they say we don't want to fool with it. So, we're on it. Company have like a big celebration, I tell you what, now.
I have been.
We may be out all this time. I'm still making all this. After one, you're gonna be months, maybe twenty years.
If they give them, if they ever give you all firm date, let us know all right, the paper will set up a whole thing. People choose.
Correct.
Key.
You got any old business?
Just that cover, don't let it holler.
Well, if we got.
It ain't sticking up in iron, about what it was, but it's still.
We can, I can have it fixed probably, but I can have house on my own and fix it, but it's not gonna do any good until we get that landowner to fix their bottom, but they hadn't fixed up there, you know how that went down. That, that's the fault. We, we can come in and put that box in there, but it's not gonna do no good.
No, it's just gonna fill up with rock and sand.
Exactly, from that land out. So, I might toss a long hip like him later, too.
Should we go to the new landowner or the old one?
It's gonna fall on you. You know how that is.
Because I think that's more rocking on top, too.
State keep, people talking states, that's not, that is no form, wear, fashion, state issue. That's off-state, by the way, it's not there.
What's that new motor from, and it would be?
Yeah, they can fix it, too. I've done seen all the surveyors and everybody leaving on that now, that's probably never happened, pardon. That thing in the flash, yeah.
One thing, we had decided to take the school building off the demolition project, and you were gonna see if we could add some more?
They'll let us add more. Me and Mike have been back and forth, even as late as well ago, we've been back and forth on the ticket. We, of course, they won't let us put one. Now, now adding to it, the age matters, because there's no time for historical studies.
Didn't we decide that we were gonna go ahead and have a historical study done on this?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I couldn't remember, me and you.
I believe we discussed it, and we decided to go ahead and do it so we'd be out of the way next time.
Did we agree to go ahead and pay that lady that other amount of money that she wanted to go ahead and go further with that next study to where we would have, have that out of the way, if we did get grant money, that would be already out of the way? And how good would that study be good, would it be good indefinitely?
I mean, it should be pretty good for a couple of years, I mean, if it's, if it's not historical now, it's not gonna be in two years.
I think five years, we apply for grants in five years.
We just ran it for five years.
If we apply within the next five, that.
That study is good.
I think that brought up a little.
I don't think it's a dollar amount, never was discussed with. I initially said we didn't vote. I was thinking of voting, though.
Spoken about, I was like, there.
That we walked, that we've discussed, how much, did you look up and see how much?
I did not look that, how much you, and I can't remember.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's installed amount that would be.
We probably look at how much.
We'd have to do a new contract with Ms. Stokes for this, and I don't know if this study is the same cost as the first study.
What was the first?
I think around five thousand, or like that.
I think that, I think we, I think that figure actually came up last time.
Oh, seven or eight. That, that was for studies on about eighteen properties.
Yeah.
That's the first study. This new one would be what I call the second study, which is just on the pseudo building.
I thought it was eighteen, without, 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 I'm sure I still have that.
As a, usually, as a general, from what I've seen over the last twenty years, a demolition grant, the city in Southwood doing demolition grants, is usually about ten to twelve-year call.
So, it's gonna be ten years before we know that?
That's what I'm, that's just me thinking, another CDBG for demolition, for demolition projects.
Oh, it's gonna be ten years, and the grant's gonna get to five, I mean, the study's gonna get to five years, there's no sense in doing, that's, that's what I'm going, I don't know if we'd be ready to do another in five years. Well, that test, we hit, we wasn't just overwhelmed with extra projects that we didn't get included in this one.
Yeah, we reached out to about thirty-something landowners and had eighteen that said yes. We've probably got four or five now, if we did do a new grant, that would like to be included.
Well, our business one right now, we don't have anybody bid on, we don't want to do it.
Oh, now, I think the last two times with, the city did it, the last two times the city did it, that's been, that ten, over ten years ago. Because I, we haven't did one since I've been in, it's been ten years. So, it's been over ten years ago, and each time, it was sixteen to eighteen houses, it was sixteen to eighteen, sixteen to eighteen structures. So, that's where we're at this time, about sixteen to eighteen, and it's been at least ten years, if not twelve. So, that's why I don't know that we're gonna go ahead and spend that money for that historical, because there's anything, there's a lot of things that have happened between then and with that building, that arch, you know, or we don't have to have a historical study. I think we need to wait before we make that decision. I mean, this is not necessarily old business, but the Ricky's, young bucks, the truck that Ricky drives, has been driving, you know, picking, it's laid down, transmission died over.
He walks everywhere, anyway.
Um, has, has, has been able to go look and see what state has surplus to replace that truck that he had, trying to get to council and give the okay way, and I think we're coming, that truck, I think, probably thirteen, fourteen-year-old, I think it's two thousand, thirty-two thousand miles, I think, what that truck was handling, and I don't find a new, I find a new surplus that upgraded that truck. People that end up with state surplus, not normally. They broke the one to get it.
You got a car for a cut, Dave, did you? You asked if you had this.
Yeah, login. Login.
No, for, in the vehicle, if I suck a state.
Oh, he can, he can go. I just got a, I reset the password. He's registered, it was just the password expired.
Oh, wait a minute. I think it's twenty-eleven, thirty-twenty, twenty-eleven, thirty-twelve.
He came down one down there, get that and give it to one of the other boys.
Which, what?
He asked me how much the gas, the gas district had one for, uh.
You had thirteen hundred, you had a Eagle, looked in?
Yeah, Bob didn't want.
Wouldn't you go meet up with a little trade clerk? We looked at the truck, but it had a rear money on it, bad.
We, they've been some talk about this street over by the church, Bryant, is that Bryant?
Bryant.
Um, that's, that street's not very long.
It's in very check, I've pictured, I saw it in two thousand eight, maybe in two thousand and eight, so. It looks ruined by a man.
I took pictures of it. One problem with that, can't, nobody paid for the one.
I took pictures of it two years ago, and it was still, it was pretty bad.
I'm gonna reach out, if I even come, just to say, I wouldn't get it.
I wouldn't do that much when you do that, rather than.
Probably, I won't pay you. I'll pick, I'll pick.
If you get somebody to paint it twelve.
Twelve to seventeen, eighteen, twelve to eighteen thousand miles, probably.
Oh, true. I'm not sure, my dogs. I should judge it from some of the, the length of, some of the other ones, black ones.
Now, I'm hoping that Luke can get bids on Midway Drive. Can we go back to? Uh, let me go back up to, uh, that way, if anybody thinks I'm not going to close out on old business, I'll, I'll revisit it here in a minute. Then we'll go back up here to this resolution number thirteen fifty. I need to ask the council to go ahead and, uh, we need to act on that, uh, resolution, and see what Todd's, if I missed. We already adopted and passed the resolution, all I'm saying we need to do is sign and print the version, meaning she would think we've actually adopted the resolution, have the council make a decision.
And it does, it does, and that, that's what I was saying.
So, I need to, we already adopted it, so what's he want me to do, ask?
We don't have to do anything, he was just, he didn't sign, so, that council meeting drew it at the top of that page, and that's where you all voted for it. He set the rates in there to, uh, like move as needed, yeah.
Uh, so, there's nothing on there. I need to, uh, amend the agenda, change the council date from next Tuesday, I'll, I'll be out of town next Tuesday for.
I'd be out all week.
All week.
Living cheese, I won't be back till Saturday.
What, what's, oh, poor calendar, what's the, what's the, we're running out of days, we've got to give.
Yeah, I mean, there should be that much going on next week, between now.
Do it twenty-fifth.
You say do it the twenty-fifth? Everybody be around the twenty-fifth? Now, Carl, that needs to, let, let me amend the agenda to change, I need to reason for amendment of the agenda to change, the council date, I need to ask for motion for amendment of the agenda. Team to make motion, say it all in favor. Uh, the reason of amendment of the agenda is we need to change the council date from July the eighteenth to July the twenty-fifth. Get a motion to change it to the twenty-fifth. Change June second, all in favor. Back to, uh. We've got, um, which, we've got two of the decorative lights that's still out down here on the corner, on the south side of one eighteen, right here, and when Midway Drive goes down. And they, when that power line burnt that road, they, when they redone that, they didn't, we didn't get power down to that. I need to, uh, I don't, I, I need to get, I need to get some electrician to come in there and tell us what we got to do, get Kevin Horton to get the power in there and get those two lights going.
Now, I, I did talk to the consultant about that, and he said some, I can't remember now exactly, and I've got to go back through the emails and look, but I thought he said the circuits were out, or something, I can't remember.
Yeah, we're, we're beyond that, we'll fix it.
So, yeah, but he's supposedly, there was something going on with those two, I'm sorry.
Okay, if I get them fixed. All right. We go back to that truck, we already decided what we was going to do. Rob, uh, I guess I need to, see if the council's okay with letting Rob continue to look for a truck to replace that one and do what surplus he can do. Council's all right. Uh, I guess the next amendment of the agenda is to place the bills, I need to ask for motion to place the bill. I need to make a motion, Keith, say it all in favor. Mike, could you barely even know anything that I forgot, Gina? All right, the next amendment of the agenda is adjourn, I need to ask for motion to adjourn. Tim, and then Keith, say it all in favor.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, uh, steel now has a lawn mower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero-turn motors, we have a full line of the steel, uh, wheat trimmer and chainsaws, just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint, to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can, thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Guen and Fayette, we've been serving the people of northwest Alabama for twenty-three some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year, and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year, and for the years to come.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Conditioners. We've been family-owned and operated since nineteen fifty-four, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and like commercial HVAC systems.
So, as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at two oh five four six eight four six two five.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at nine eighty-one Alabama Highway two fifty-three, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at two oh five four eight seven four three two seven.